Everyone. Thank you all very much for coming out on this cold rainy Monday evening. The time is 7:08 and I'd like to officially call this meeting to an end. Okay, Briggs?
Here.
Blackman?
Here.
Huckabee?
Here.
Corrigan?
Here.
And, oh, one more. Okay. Nelson?
Here.
Alright, and the forum has been taken. Thank you very much. First item on the agenda, audience comments, and we do not have any. One slide. Next item on the agenda, student recognition, Parker cheerleaders walk up polls for cancer.
Absolutely, we're very excited to have the Parker Junior High School cheerleaders tonight to just give a walk of hope for cancer. They welcome Cynthia Ray, Julie Coach, and well, one other student.
We, the Parker cheerleaders, decided this year that we wanted to give back more than we normally do. And in order to that public, we had to find different avenues. And so, I decided that we could do the Walk of Hope in support of breast cancer and basically any type of cancer. And the girls were very supportive, their parents were supportive, and we were able to donate through us over time with the dollars. So we're very proud of them. The girls were awesome. We cheer them.
Alright, so we have a certificate for that. If we can have the board members come around this way. Girls, if you want to come up, start shaking hands. Wait, hold on. Hands go.
We're bowing.
Alright, so we'll start with Mr. Nelson here, and then work our way all the way down to me with your certificates. Nadia Brower. Annala Brown. Kelly Fields. We're getting those out of the way first. Reagan Gibson. Avon Hall. Arianna Harris. Danielle Robinson. Kate Robinson. Kennedy Robertson. Jay Russell. Janelle Smith. Alright, Reagan there. Kathy O'Chavez. Jada Watson. Chloe Abraham. George Abraham. Isabel Bright. Isara Hester. Mary Bell Jimenez. Jamie Cole. Kami Arker. Jade Lee. Erin Rosso. Vanessa. And Tyler Rogers. Kai Swift. Jordan Martin. I will personally... I will deliver your certificate. But now you can stand right here for the picture, so stand right here, come on girls.
The flag should probably be brought. This is the flag. I will be a flagger.
And don't move because there are plenty of moms on the stage here. Yeah, be quiet. All right, it's a whole thing. Is everybody good?
Alright. Great job.
Alright, thank you.
Mommy, you need to take my picture. You want to take my picture.
Alright. We are going to move along on the agenda. Next item on superintendent's report, Dr. Smith.
Charles, very happy to report next to you. Now, this was our first student recognition of the year, but that was, as a matter of fact, we have another set of incredible student athletes coming out to our next board meeting to recognize them to be the Parker Junior High Cross Country team. They performed incredibly well at Bronx High Junior High in Normalville, Illinois. As a matter of fact, the girls' team finished 21st out of 125 schools, and the boys' team finished 23rd out of 125 schools. So, we are incredibly proud of those students and all their hard work. Then, you know, finally, that's actually a very short report, but I would like to take a moment to recognize the incredible group of golden principals that we have in our school district and assistant principals. Last Friday was taking principal day, and it was a great opportunity for me just to show my appreciation for all of them. They are the leaders of work with our students and teachers on a daily basis. A number of them that I saw were just returning, or some of them just returning from outdoor rep, and those are the things that aren't in the job description, but certainly as teachers, as parents, and as members of the district, one is someone who are grateful for that. They're clearly just a group of caring, smart, professional people, and I know that's certainly loving to work with them and have them on our team. So, if we can give them all just a little bit.
Next item on the agenda, 2017 property tax. Mrs. Bella.
I have with me tonight Dr. Rob Rosey, Bloom Township Treasurer and expert in all things school finance. And we're going to kind of play off each other. I gave you a hard copy too of my slides because there's a lot of graphs and charts in there. It's also in your Word doc loaded up, so you should have it in multiple places. And we're going to kind of talk about, so of all the options that we've been talking about, what is its impact going out on the five-year projection model? I'm going to let Rob start, because he kind of came from it from his perspective. He took a look at our posts and, you know, our financial position, and he did his analysis. And I worked online, and then we kind of at the end had a little quick conversation and we landed in the same place. We must be good. So, Rob, why don't you just kind of tell them what you did?
Thank you. Hi, good evening, everybody. And for those who I knew or I haven't met before, I'm Rob Rosey, and the treasurer for Bloom Township Trustee Schools. So, in that capacity, I'm the treasurer for 18 school districts, including Flossmore 161 and Homewood Flossmore High School, Rich Township High School, and a bunch of other school districts in the area, and West Door School District as well. And I've been doing this for a lot of years, and I'm also a proud graduate of the City of Nels, of the City of Nels. So, I was asking two things. The next item on the agenda is annual investment report. But tonight we're talking about the possibility of a popular tax freeze or a popular tax payment. And I've worked with a lot of school districts on this issue. It's not a clear-cut issue, and it's an issue that has positives and negatives. So, from my perspective, separate from Fran's perspective, first of all, I recognize that the South Suburbs is amongst the highest tax rates in the state of Illinois. And I also recognize, having lived here all my life, that our local economic base is not the same as it used to be when I was a kid, partially because our taxes are very high. So, that's a huge challenge. We deny a lot of commercial industrial property to help offset our cost of education, cost of firing police and everything. So, we rely on residents. Unfortunately, that's most of the reason why taxes are so high. So, on one end, we need to recognize that. And on the other end, you never want to become a school district where your budget is so tight even to make difficult decisions, it could have a negative impact on the quality of education in your body. Flossmore 161 is an excellent school district, and you never want to put yourself in a position where you have to compromise having good staff, good facilities, good technology, because you have to make difficult decisions in the budget. So, you kind of want to try to balance the two. In terms of, the good news is, in terms of fund balance reserves, the district is in help, has healthy fund balance reserves. They have about a year's worth of fund balance reserves. That's a positive. On the negative side, there was this new school funding reform that was passed called Senate Bill 1947. It changed the funding formula. And as a person that went down to Springfield several times and represented the South Suburbs primarily, probably the district that was most adversely impacted by this bill that is being claimed only as a good bill was Flossmore 161. Flossmore 161, without getting into the details of the bill, they categorized school districts into four different buckets, tier one, tier two, tier three, and tier four. Tier one are the core school districts, tier four are the wealthy school districts. Flossmore 161 falls into tier two. Most of the school districts in the South Suburbs fall into tier one. When they first ran, just as a sidebar, when they started the formula and did the pure formula, Flossmore was a tier one school district, which means that you get the majority of the new money. They changed the formula in a way that shifted money away from South Cook and into the city of Chicago in order to help the bill pass. And that, the changes that they made really hurt Flossmore 161, without getting into the details. But the bottom line is this, is that whatever new money, the first $175 million of any new money goes into tier one. As a tier two school district, you don't get any money unless school funding increases by at least $175 million. My contention is, this year they're going to increase it by $350,000, but many experts believe that it's going to be difficult to sustain that type of growth in state revenues. Even with a $350 million increase, your state revenues are only projected to increase about $115,000. So, out of $350 million of new money coming into education, your district is going with $115,000. So, the bottom line is, is that about 30% of your money, 25% of your money comes from state revenues, and about 5% of your money comes from federal. So, 30% of your money comes from those two sources, and I think there's a very strong probability that those two sources will not grow over the next decade. They'll be relatively flat. So, the only growth in revenues that you potentially have is in savvy real estate taxes. If your real estate tax revenues grow 2%, which is what the current CPI is, although it's projected to be a little bit lower going forward, and in fact, you get 2% more money than your real estate taxes and 0% in the other place, your revenues will grow at a rate of about 1.3% to 1.4% a year. So, again, no right or wrong, but know that it's very likely that your revenues are going to grow somewhere between 1% and 1.5% over the next many years. With that being said, and this is something that's beyond, you know, what I do, is that if you be keeping expenditure growth at that rate, you're going to be fine. But based on history and based on expenses that are uncontrollable in some ways, special education costs, employee benefit costs are sometimes difficult to control, it's hard to keep revenue expenditures at 1.25%. So, if your expenditures grow at a rate greater than 1.1% to 1.5%, then your financial condition will start to improve. I'm not saying the district will run out of money over the next five years, and Fran has projections to give more of the specifics, but know that if your expenditure growth grows faster than your revenue growth, your financial condition starts to get worse. And again, you have a year's worth of reserves, so there'll be time before you run out of money, but the situation may arise when the district starts to have this spending, and if it's an objective in Board of Education, you have a balanced budget, you may have to make some reductions in your expenditures to offset your own revenue. So, now I'm going to turn over to Fran, if she gets a little more of the specifics of the projections.
Well, I'm going to get into Louise. I'm going to ask her to jump in when I start talking about what assumptions I've made. A good part of how good a projection is, is how good your assumptions are and whether they're reasonable or not. So, I'm going to ask her to just jump in as she feels great as we start going through some of this, okay? So, the question really is, how much does a 2017 levy impact our five-year projections, right? It's kind of a question, and you can throw around some different options. So, I've got four scenarios that I'm going to run for you. We'll go through each of the four, and then at the very end, what I've done is play each scenario one on top of the other so that you can see the impact over five years, okay? So, on the first one, this is our basic projection. This is what we've been doing all the time, all year long, your normal CPI levy, okay? The revenue assumptions, for the 2017 levy, the CPI is 2.1%. We're going with a 15% increase in EAV, little triennial reassessment. $5 million of new property, there's still money out there in that Meyer, so again, there's still some money on the Meyer property, plus the buildings are going up around it, okay? So, I've been in contact with the village and so on, $5 million is about where tax and values are sitting as a projection on that. After the 2017 levy, I need to make some projections for the next five years. So, what we've done is use a CPI estimate of 1.5%. I used about $600,000 in new property. That's about where we've been in those years when we didn't have things like Meyer and Tewa and kind of about where we've been. For state funds, as Rob has said, you know, we've got that whole new evidence-based model. What your state funds are for that new general state aid, it is the base funding minimum for this year, that $6.2 million. It does not include any of the new money, since we don't know what we're going to get in a tier-two school. We are thinking it's going to be about $100,000, but until we see good numbers, we decided to just take it off the table for a moment. So, it's going to be at 6.2, and I have held it frozen for the next five years, so it is a conservative number. All other state funds, as you know, this year all we did was budget for the two payments that were still owed us from last year. So, there's a really good chance that we're going to get a lot more money in those mandated categoricals this year because the second payment is on its way, and we believe we're going to get two more for this year. But, for projection sake, I have said we will take the 2017 amount for transportation, for special ed transportation, for specialty-type facility, those are about all the mandated categoricals that are left, because as you recall, most of those got folded into the evidence-based model. So, for those, I've got to say, the school or the state will pay all four payments every year from this point forward, so about $1 million, okay? So, that's the estimate, and it will, and we remain flat for that one forward. All federal funds have froze at this rate level, numbers that we have tested this year have frozen, okay? So, those are our revenue assumptions. Rob, you good with those?
Uh-huh.
Alright. On the expenditure side. Salaries through the 1920, the public bargaining agreement goes through 1920, so we use those amounts that were already bargained for certified. It was 3% for next year, 3.35 for the year after. Classifieds, 3.5, 3.5. After that, I moved to 2%. Remember, we're talking about CPI at 1.5. So, all things being equal, I'm going to put in another 3, so I put in 2, so we are making conservative. All stipend amounts are frozen for the whole five years, so same amount, no increases. Medical insurance is actually, I have 4% year-over-year for a while there. We were seeing zeros and small. I will tell you this, that the insurance cutoff is starting to season soon people again, so that 4% is probably going to be very conservative, maybe see more than that, okay? I have not included any TRS caution in these projections. And then, for construction, I put in a full $3.8 million for the heavy build, like safety work for next summer, and Parker including children's nutrition system, that was the maximum that we were talking about, that we're going to talk about going after bid right now. So, I have to put those in for that year. After that, all construction ceases, but we still have $250,000 in there for summer projects, more maintenance work, continue around the district, okay? On all other... Thank you. All other expenses are frozen at 2017.
Let's start with the cost shift.
Okay. When I run this in, this is here, okay? When I put that in, and you do have a hard copy, I can take it there. When I put it in, Rob's numbers aren't too far off, really you start seeing about a 1.8%. So, this is this year, that $1 million deficit that we're talking about, okay? That's actual, you're going to see that in every single one of these slides, we won't change, okay? The first year, you're talking about a $2.7 million deficit with a CPI on, that is mostly that $3.8 million construction, okay? This little year, 2020, we've got $27,000 deficit, in my opinion, that's flat, okay? Your balance. Then you start getting to about $100,000, $200,000, just shy of $400,000 of deficit spending, okay? If we see $100,000 and it stays in the base funding minimum, by the time you get three years out, you're flat, okay? CPI has been balanced, essentially balanced. That $400,000 won't be too difficult to work with. However, in my two, we haven't talked about replenishment of some technology, there's only half a million dollars each of those years for new curriculum supplies, those kinds of things. So, you know, it's still very much a work in progress, but we need to find a base, and this is where we're going to start the base. When you take a look at what that does with your projecting year end balances, so here we are, right to the back in the middle, 2018, this is our budget year right here, okay? Going into 19, this big dip right here is mostly your construction projects for next summer, okay? Keeping CPI on, now this top line is your year-end fund balances, your bottom line is your estimated lowest point, so the time when we're waiting on new tax dollars and you hit your lowest of your cash flow, okay? So, this is your lowest, but you're looking at about $25.8 million still at the end of the five-year projection, okay? So, that is levy, where we always have. So, let's talk about our first three. There are three different options in here on what a property tax takes. The first one is 0%, but still trying to capture that $5 million of new property. So, instead of putting on a full levy, you're basically putting on about $270,000, okay? That's keys to trying to collect from that new property coming off. The difference between a CPI and this model is about $500,000 in the first year, but remember that it starts to compound every year thereafter because your base that you're levying that percentage on is reduced by that half a million dollars. So, it's going to be a compound every year. Here's some of the challenges with this. We don't have a good new property figure. We won't have a new property figure when we have to put on this levy. So, we have to guess, and $5 million if you do a guess, it could be less, it could be more. If you do, if you underestimate the value of that new property, you're going to lose even more than that $200,000. If you overestimate what that property value is, they're still going to put on a $270,000, so you're leaving 3 and it's going to be perfectly honest, so I don't think it really works out anyway, because if we're trying to capture that $270,000, it's still going to shell, cost of work, all it's going to do is change the rate, and it's going to break that, that one that goes on with the property. So, every taxpayer will actually see some increase, it just won't pay that $200,000. So, it doesn't really work, you can't pinpoint this property is going to get all the tax bill, it doesn't work that way. So, this is a little tricky. Additionally, where it's going to have to pass a resolution that tells the county to take off the loss and cost automatic up on the tax levy, okay, to a loss and cost of 5%. So, whatever you tell them to levy, they increase it by 5% to cover for loss and cost if you don't pay taxes, okay? If you don't roll that off, CPI is 2%, that's what's going to happen. They're going to put on 5%, and you're going to get CPI, yeah, you did free them. That's just normal enough, so you're going to have to take that off, this is what we do, so that'll be a separate resolution, that loss and cost. So, if you do this, that first year that I said you're about flat, really? That first year that was like $27,000, you're now at half a million. Another half million, by the end of it, you're just shy of $900,000 bucks. So, that's trying to put on about a quarter of levy off. Your fund balances at the end, you're down to 23. Your fund balances at the end, you're down to 23. Okay, what if you just froze and just try and capture that property? Because it is kind of messy. So you've just freeze completely. What we got last year is exactly what we're going to get this year. You don't need to try and capture that $5 million.
Can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Just to clarify what you're saying, we're at the end of the year, and you're talking about the 2020. Are we talking about where we'll be at the end of 20 or 21?
2023.
2021.
2023.
All right, thank you.
The difference here is going to be another quarter of a million, so you're looking at about $750,000 less from what your CPI levy would be. Again, it compounds again because the base is going to continue to be lower than what it should have been. And again, on this one, you're going to have to do a resolution to take care of, to take off loss of cost. Because otherwise, you'll lose that much. Because that's another quarter of a million dollars. Your first year, we're at that 2020 where you were flat at $27,000 deficit. You're now at $750,000 deficit, growing every year up to $1.1 million by 2023.
So Fran, just curious, did you, for your own personal, um, um, calculations, did you happen to take this out past this five years to figure out when? I mean, because in both this scenario and the one before that, I mean, obviously, the trend is down, and we have an increasing deficit. So did you take it out far enough to figure out at what point? Hold on, did you take it out far enough to figure out at what point are we now as a district starting to get into trouble and really need to be concerned?
My take on that question, I don't need to take it out any further, you're already in trouble. And the reason I say that is because if you take a look at 2022 and 2023, your salaries and benefits alone are outpacing your property taxes. That's a problem.
In which year was that, Fran?
2022, 2023. So take a look, where you can see that salary and benefit line, then take a look at the property tax revenue index. You can't sustain that.
About 2022.
So in 20, okay, so then in 2022, so you're saying in your, for you, that's the year that we start getting into it.
That's when I start going.
So as a district, if this is the route that we went, what do we do in 2022 to reverse this?
Well, here's, from my perspective on this, you still have fund balances where you can start trying to slowly pull yourself out. You're going to have to take a look at all expenses. That's one we have to talk about, remember that first guiding question? Do you require a balanced operating budget? If the answer to that is yes, bar none, you've got problems with this model. If your answer is no, we're okay for a little while, but then we need to figure out how much is okay, and then how we're going to pull back expenses when you've gotten to a fund balance level that you're comfortable with? Because when I start looking at salaries and benefits outpacing the amount of money you're taking in on property tax revenue, that means you're looking at stack costs. Because a whole lot of those other expenses below that salary and benefit lines, there's not a whole lot in there that's flawed. It's your books, it's your peak gas, it's your electric.
So if we did that in 2022, started dipping into our fund balance in order to dig ourselves out of this, as you, your words, what does that essentially mean? Does that essentially mean that we, in order for us to dig ourselves out and have a balanced budget, we will have to significantly reduce expenses that we are breaking even? But we will never have a healthy balance sheet that looks the way it does this year?
Oh, it'll never look the way it looks this year again. You'll never be able to make that back.
Right, so I guess my point is that we dig ourselves out, but we won't be in the same healthy position that we were in in 2017 when we made this decision.
You won't be able to have a fund balance for that exactly.
Talking about fund balances, or at least to me, it's easier to make. Fund balances, or let's assume we didn't have any fund balance, nothing, right? We didn't end up with a problem, it's easier to think of a problem, okay? If we, you know, we're balanced this year, and if we are 200 short next year, you know, Fran and the property pulls some money out of construction somewhere, right? And make that up, but three or four years from now, we're looking at $700,000, we're going to shortfall all, right? So we would be, you know, since 74% of our costs is personnel, then three, you know, but the chances are that's where we're going to cut costs. We would have to cut costs. The fund balances allow us to ignore that problem for a while, but they don't make it go away. And so the only, it's the only way we would ever resolve with all the downward trend by cutting costs would be by cutting personnel.
Rosalie and Cynthia.
Yeah. So again, then you're down to 21, 22. And the last one I did, I just kind of wanted to show you. If you kept trying to capture this new property and you froze for two years, 17 and 18, tried to keep new property on, but froze at 0 CPI, I found it interesting that the end, it wasn't all that much different than just not capturing new property today. You end up still about 21.6 million maybe, 28. It really wasn't all that different. So here's what I did, I dropped every scenario, one on top of the other. So that top line that you saw on all those charts with the end of fund balances, 2018, here's where we are right here with our budget. That drop, there's that 3.8 million construction for next summer. The blue line comes back. The blue line is if you put on CPI at 2.1. The red line is a freeze, but trying to capture that $5 million of new property. And then those other two, you can see where I said those two scenarios pretty much put you in the same spot and still works. When you don't even try and to capture that $5 million that's coming onto the goals this year. So I guess the question is, what? What question do you have? This is a difficult conversation. We do have some fund balances. I still come from a place that says I'd like to have an operating balanced budget and use those fund balances wisely. I think 3.8 million of that construction to finish off all that is wild. You have the funds to do it, I would ask Rob, but physically, it's not that one as well. But I think when you start getting into operating deficits, when you start running into real problems, then you have to start shooting away at quality of relationships.
I actually, I actually would like to hear your thoughts on fund balances and your experience. Do you see what's healthy, what's not, what should be being concerned with?
Sure, and you're exactly right, Cameron, that you can look at the two as a separate scenario. When I'm evaluating the financial strength of the school district, I look at them separate. So on the balanced budget side, if a school district runs a balanced budget and they have a dollar in the bank, they'll never run that one. So balanced budget is a huge thing that interests me when I'm working with a school district to try to get them to use that for. Another challenge that really has been brought up in this situation is unlike other school districts, every school district has a maximum amount they can borrow for capital projects. Everyone has their own credit card. And it was based on what your property tax levy was back in the mid-1990s, when tax caps were started. Your district did not have a lot of debt at that point in time. So you have a very low limit that you could lobby every year for bond, to borrow money for capital projects. So you're in a position, unlike other school districts, you know, I help out for it. They just borrow $50 million for capital projects. You know, they borrow from them, the register can't do something wrong. So you have to rely on those fund balances reserves for capital projects. So you need, so I don't know your needs, and I don't know the needs of the district. They have to listen to 3, 3.5 million dollar project design in terms of capital, in terms of... But that's something that has to be on the decision-making department. One of the things, and ironically, I'm having the same conversation with Home Loss for High School right now, the finance committee last week. Now, Home Loss for High School has a fund balance reserve policy to help mitigate them through these decisions. And their fund balance reserve policy is 10 months for the fund balance reserve. So they, and they're above that at this point in time. But as they're making their decisions, they look at that as a guiding post of what they want to do. So they're going to be at the projects now, they're going to use fund balance reserves because they're old, right? But they're looking at that, they're looking at this decision as well, as it relates to having a minimum reserve. One of the things that maybe Fran and I have different opinions on, but it's something that you just need to know as far as the menu of options, is one of the things, again, with everything we're talking about tonight, it's got positive and negative. But one of the things is that school districts, instead of lowering their, you know, let's say you drop it by $500,000, and you lose that $500,000 forever, like in Fran's projections, you could evade your bond and interest levy by $500,000 and give the taxpayers the same $500 in tax relief, and it won't impact, it won't impact in and of itself years two, three, four, and five, the projections. We'll just give one year, $500,000 hit, and there shouldn't be a negative to it. But, but, so with that being said, you have about a $1.2 million annual, or 2.2, no, 2. 1.1, so your bond levy is $1.1 million, and it's lasting for the next seven years. That's a tax levy. You could lower that, and then every year, you'd have that decision. So in theory, you could lower that by half a million dollars, and then reassess your financial situation next year and decide if you want to do it again. If you want, you do it every year, you have to file it to the county by April 2nd. So you'd have a little time to make that decision, and you could do that. Now, the negative is that if you drop it by $500,000 this year, and you don't drop it next year, then there'll be, in the eyes of the taxpayer, a $500,000 increase. Even though they're net $500,000 of savings, here we go from, you know, $1.2 million to $700,000, back up to $1.22 million. So optically, that potentially could be a troubling issue. But in terms of managing a, if you were focused just on the district, as a district's financial commission, and a board of education was hard set on doing a, some sort of reduction in taxes, they at least have to consider that as an option because it is a one-time. A $500,000 drop in your tax levy that doesn't include your bonds is $500,000 per year forever. That's why it has a huge impact. A $500,000 increase in your bond and interest levy is a one-time $500,000 impact. So in terms of the budget, it's a better situation. In terms of the taxpayers and how that plays out, again, you have that potential of it spiking back up if a board of education decides that to do. So there's a custom on, you're running this.
So what if we come with that scenario? Are you able to say theoretically, what does that really translate into in terms of cost savings?
Sure, so Fran answered numbers, she looked at a tax bill of around $175,000 market value home. You know, so if it's more, your house is more or less, you know, in terms of... But a reduction of $500,000 in your levy would reduce that whole $175,000 house by 150 and 60 dollars.
Just based on what it would be if you put on CPI. It doesn't change it for this year, and again, you can't promise every taxpayer that's what they're going to see because with this triangle assessment, it's every piece gets sliced up.
But on average, so, you know, everyone's tax bill will grow up exactly the same. But basically, if you did nothing and went up 2.1%, which is what inflation is going to be this year, which is what most school districts are going to grow up, for that homeowner, their taxes would go up by about 50 or 60 dollars. So if you froze the taxes instead of allowing that increase, they would basically be flat versus the previous years, but it's 50 or 60 dollars less, as Fran said, than it would have been. And then, and then if it's, you know, and then if, you know, it's other, you know, certainly houses in your district that are worth twice as much then, there shouldn't be houses that are worth half of it.
So when Rob said though, with that being, this is where we're at, we do disagree a little bit on whether this is the best strategy or not. So if you evade the bond and interest, it doesn't just end there. You still need to then transfer money from your operating accounts into your debt service fund to pay for your bond and interest payment, otherwise you won't have.
You'll lose by $100,000.
Yeah, you'll lose it in your operating account. So it'll show the same operating funds as what you have there. The thing is though, that your base wouldn't deteriorate until you could no longer evade it, okay? You can play that game out for the next seven years, eight. At that point, essentially, what you're doing is extending your levy out for one more year when your bonds would have rolled off, the taxes would go down. At that point, you would maintain flat from what CPI is. Or if you didn't play that game for seven years, at some point in time, if you wanted to take advantage of that full levy, your taxpayers would see something that looked like a double levy that year. Now, that's the piece that makes me go, hmm, so we save you $50 year one, but I charged you $100 year two. I don't feel that that's the best way to go.
So under that scenario, these are changes that 161 makes. What happens if HF district makes? I mean, what is the impact of high school district that also has our tax dollars feeding up into it? What if they do levy, they don't, you know, they're not freezing, I mean, so will our homeowners still?
Well, that savings, so that saving relates only to your portion of the debt. So they would, you know, they would not give the, on average, the increase of 50 or 60 dollars where they would have had you not taken that action. But certainly, if the village raises it by two, I don't want to go there, but, so they go up by 2.1%. The high school goes up by 2.1%, you know, then their tax bill is still going to go up. Now, next year, the homeowner's exemption is going up, which is separate from this, which provides some savings for homeowners. In terms of the gross tax allowances of the school district, yeah, the other pieces will go up. But the two biggest pieces of the tax bill are, you know, HF and Lost Home 161, which is, you know, school districts are likely, they have the highest services.
I have a question for you. Certainly, we kept mentioning when you were presenting, expenditure growth has to be controlled. This goes back to budgets. And I'm sure you live with budgets, you have budgets, and just like anybody has a household budget, you have to stay within that budget. And if you find yourself overspending in certain parts, you got to go through somewhere and pull in what you need. I'm looking at, and again, a lot of hard work, and I commend you, Fran and your team for doing this. A lot of hard work is really difficult to these numbers. And I look at where we are in 2021, but I also look at, I wonder where we move in in terms of school cultures eventually, because we have quite a few. And I'm not just speaking about Hays, I'm speaking about the home, I'm speaking about the foster, Chicago. And I'm not just speaking about Haysburg, I'm speaking about the home, I'm speaking about the Fosco, Chicago Heights, all across the board. We can't tax four cultures. And that continues to rise. We have an issue. We've got taxes coming in a number of different ways. We'll also be hearing about later on the agenda, another tax that may be being imposed. So my question comes, and I keep hearing what we're going to lose. And, 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 and the problem that I have is we have, now, I'm just going to just put it this way, and however you, you want to semantically play it, we're taking thirty million dollars from taxpayers and putting it in reserve. We're healthy, we're great. Looking down the road, we're going to run into some problems. Looking down the road, I'm thinking about, it's some taxpayers are going to run into some problems too. Could be any of us missing in this room. We don't know what tomorrow holds for anyone's job. But I think a real intelligent thing to do, I pulled my tax bill. I just wonder how many people have looked at their second installment of their tax bill? When I looked at my second installment of my tax bill, and I looked at 2015, I know this stuff is a year behind and all of that, and 2016, I listened to what you said and I'm thinking about the future. My tax bill actually went up and I don't have a great, rambling house. Okay? Because what I paid for it certainly isn't worth it or what I paid on it. But a hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen cents is the difference of what I paid, not in addition to what I'm seeing here of a hundred and thirty dollars and fourteen cents for this district alone. So I can only imagine somebody's property that was assessed even higher. For what that may do to somebody, inclusive of all the other taxes, because it's going to hit the table. I keep hearing about what we're going to lose. We're not doing, and, and, and that, that's kind of bothering me, how do we lose something that doesn't belong to us? And when I say that, what I am speaking of, this is taxpayers' money. And we're all taxpayers that live in this district. If you don't live in this district, you're paying taxes somewhere else unless you're a resident. Unless we're talking about turning the district into higher performance. So I, I'm having, I'm having an issue. I understand we keep talking about what we're going to lose, what we're, it's not ours. This is the taxpayer, it's not ours to lose. And I'm not necessarily saying that this is the position that I take, but I just have a real issue with we have thirty million dollars in reserve. We cannot hand that back to the taxpayers. Somewhere, again, I continue to say, we have to learn to do more in rest and work within the constraints.
So, so here's my perspective about what you said. First of all, if you're saying that your taxes are too high, you're not getting any support. Our taxes are way, our parents are losing, taxes are too high.
And they're going up.
And also, the total of your tax bill last year, of all the tax bills if you add them up together, was eight tenths of one percent. And the total of the tax bill, the previous year, was seven tenths of one percent. So the good news is, even though taxes are going up, those are, you know, of the last twenty years, those are the two lowest increases in aggregate for, you know, that your districts have had. Um, in terms of fund balance reserves, again, without any right or wrong answers, here's my perception of taxes, right, I have fund balance reserves. If a, if a school district does fund balance reserves and treats the money as if differently than balanced budgets, in other words, they treat the money and, and they pay more, if they start increasing their expenses faster than the revenue growth, make, make their decisions around that, that's not a good thing. So if I had a healthy fund balance reserve, they don't make, they, they aren't leaning mean it within their budget, that's not a good thing. But fund balance reserves in and of themselves, I view it as, I view a school district as a perpetual one. I, you know, I, I was here, you know, in theory, you know, to be in the third generation of my family here. Um, you want to make sure that those reserves are, you want to make sure that this fund balance, this, this district is, can provide quality education for not only the kids that are here now, but for the little brothers and sisters who are in the building yet, for the people that will move into the district, and it's a forever thing. I mean, I mean, you know, unless something crazy happens in the world, which it may, who knows? But, but this is, but this is a, you know, this is a forever and, so like, so the fund balance reserves, if they're not spent unwisely, our money that's being assessed, it's still the community's money, and hopefully if it's spent wisely, you'd be able to make sure that your buildings will still be strong, your programs will still be strong, you can still address the needs of your kids, you can still pay a salary, you can keep qualifying people in your school district. All those things now, it's thirty million dollars a number, it's twenty-five million dollars a number. I, you know, that, that's, that's a subjective decision that the board of education has to make. But I will say that, that, that I, I, I've been appointed by the state board to, uh, to, to, to carry in essence, oversee two school districts that were bankrupt. And I mean, you're not even near that, I'm not saying that. But, 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 but it, it, having a healthy fund balance reserve is a very positive thing. It's a much, these are great conversations, well, to some of the other districts I'm working with that are down to two, three months with the fund balance reserve. So, so.
How many do you see, how many do you see in this position out of all the districts?
Well, I would say, sure, in terms, in terms of fund balance reserves, and Home Fosco High School has about fifteen months for the fund balance. So they're healthier to be on. Um, but your district, in terms of fund balance reserves, your district is very healthy. If your district is going to run a deficit next year, not counting the capital projects, I would say half the districts I'm working with, I, I probably work with forty school districts in total. Probably half the school districts will have surpluses next year. So if you're running a balanced budget from that metric of, of, of balanced budgets, you know, you're, 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 you're in the, you know, you're in the middle as far as, um, Home Fosco, we're still running healthy surpluses. Um, uh, even the Glenwoods that I work with and things like that, they're, they're still running surplus situations. So you, so you have some challenge. And the other thing, which is really important, is that when, when you look at these numbers historically, like your general state aid, your state money has grown over a million dollars over the last couple of years. Unless something funky happens, that will never happen. This bill was the worst thing that could have happened to Fosco School District 161. So know that, know that if you start running deficits, that, you know, you have to accept the fact that it's likely to be the result in fund balance drops, which can be whatever. But, but you're probably not going to get a new revenue source in that's going to wipe that out. You will have to address it in terms of reductions. So if you have a couple hundred thousand dollar reduction, like we're talking about, most school districts within a twenty-two, twenty-five million dollar budget, you could find a one percent reduction here and there. If you're in a situation where you're running million dollar deficits and you have to cut a million dollars, you know, you know, just cut, you know, buy a full copy paper and stuff like that doesn't, doesn't close the hole. So, so I, I, I can't assess your budget and, and, and whether you're running efficiently and, and the needs of your school district and things like that. I'm just, I'm just generalizing, but I'm just saying that, um, you know, there, there's, again, there's pluses and minuses in relation because the taxes are too high. We do need people, we do need to keep residents in the community, we do need to try to, so I get all that. But at the same time, you don't want to put yourself in a vulnerable situation. Um, at least, at least, and you know, Fran and I were talking, Fran and I were talking about making the, um, that, that, it's not our job to make the recommendation per se, but to talk about the pros and cons of any decision. So that's kind of our.
Well, we've, we've got to continue to have healthy discussions around.
It's, it's a great discussion.
And I think this is the first time in this district that we began to take on these type of discussions. And that's why we've got to have them, so people can be informed, allowed to just have.
What date do we have to approve the level of exit choices?
We have to file it by the last Tuesday, possibly September 17th.
So I would recommend that we bring back models with an amendment? Where do you extend levy and then when it comes back, you maintain access to those dollars? Um, then we can see how that also plays out when the money also is true.
Ooh. There are a lot of scenarios.
And I have, and I have another suggestion. I'm listening to what you're saying, but just before you got to that, there's something else I'm thinking of. Is it possible that we could probably get Will Davis in here and Al Riley, take the opportunity of Al Riley, Will Davis, and Henry, and the, and the, Deluca from Chicago Heights to talk about this piece before we have to make a decision? Also, I know that there is a bill out there that has not been funded in terms of possible abandonment or, or access.
Give me thirty more seconds, I know we can have a lot of conversation about this.
Yeah.
So.
It used to be minimal, even though it hasn't been funded.
So, so at the very end of this, so, so Will Davis has been, he has a tough situation because there's a lot of school issues and it's impossible to, to, to please all the school districts.
Sure. But again, reformers, that's not a problem.
Right. From, again, from the terms of Fosco 161, I don't think, there were some changes in there that really hurt your district. And it had, and part of it has to relate to the fact that we do have high tax rates and they punish, we're punishing school districts for that. Um, and, um, as a compromise, at the very end, what they gave us, primarily to the South suburbs, is up to fifty million, starting next year, they're going to fund up to fifty million dollars of tax relief for school districts that are in high taxing areas like Fosco 161. Um, the conversations, you know, Will had me talk to, to Vatican's office as they were drafting this thing, and the conversations were, again, specifically around helping districts like this area. You know, like Fosco 161, like Park Forest, like Ford Heights, you know, very high tax rate school districts. And it's clear that their intention is, is to fund fifty million dollars. But whether that happens or not, that's another thing. But if it does happen, um, and you apply, which October 1st of 2018 is when you would apply, and if in fact you got a grant in, you'd be able to reduce your, uh, taxes significantly, uh, sixty-nine cents, uh, sixty, point six nine percent of your BAV, where you'd be able to drop, which is a lot of money. And the state would in essence give you, it's based on how poor you are in terms of property, but you guys would give back about sixty cents for every dollar. So if you abated a million dollars, in other words, if you provided a million dollars of tax relief to your taxpayers, the state would give you back in permanent money, six hundred thousand dollars a year. So you would lower the taxes by a million dollars a year, but you would get back six hundred thousand. Again, it's a predicate of the state funding it, and then you, you, you applying for it and getting a grant because they, they go by rank order of how properly poor you are. So if Park Forest asked for it, they would give it for you guys, for example. But it's something that, 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 it's something that I would recommend any school district at least consider, um, you know, going forward.
That is a proposed bill, right?
It's legislation, but the fifty, now, it's subject to appropriation. But what they did was they set it up so that, because, because my initial response was, yeah, who's going to, you know, they, they, they knew we had a problem with some of the aspects of the bill, this was their compromise. And, um, the one, the one, they, they couldn't promise us the fifty million dollars that they put in the law that they're required to fund the school funding fund by two hundred and fifty million. But if they put fifty million dollars into this property relief pool, then they only have to fund education by three hundred million. So they, they made it easier to do legislatively, but still legislators have to agree to do it.
They don't like you.
That's, that's why I think that the, um, that's why I think the conversations with Will Davis and Deluca and Riley have, uh, have value on the importance of making this fund.
I'm going to be able to explain, I'm sure that they will be open to you if they have the opportunity and the time to come here and explain a little bit more about the school funding model and any other questions. I think we really have to take a look at all the pieces to discuss. We cannot make a decision on half information or having most of the information and learning other parts later.
What other questions would you like to ask? Because I feel like we've talked about the fund level. I just want to make sure that we're covering all the bases, anything specific?
Uh, with, with them, I believe a conversation just bringing them in here to just explain it and, and see in their, I want to make sure that everybody is on the same page. And I think that they would be open to doing that.
I, I, I can't speak for all of them, but certainly Dr. Smith and I have meetings with Will Davis, so I do know that people would be interested. Um, I know they've been doing these. Right, so I know they've been, they've been having these sort of town hall meetings in some of the other districts. So, I mean, we can revisit that. I mean, so obviously the goal is to, um, um, increase the board's knowledge so that we can make a more decision, but it's time for us to do that. So we really appreciate you, um, coming here, staying and going through this, Fran. You know, I know this is a big bump at night and I know it. Um, so we really do appreciate it and, you know, we probably, as we, um, so this ended more, we have more questions. Um, but this is extremely, extremely helpful, a very healthy discussion. But I think that the district and the community needs to be part of it. And any more questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, annual investment report.
Sure. And I'm going to keep this in three minutes or less summary. Uh, every year, I present to the board of education a summary of the annual investment report. Um, Fosco School District 161, as I mentioned, um, their, their funds are invested in a pool of the eighteen school districts that we serve. Um, so, uh, for the fiscal year end of June 32, 2017, uh, the average pool size of the school districts was three hundred and sixty million, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. Of that amount, uh, or, or, or with that average investment earning, uh, pool size, the pool funds realized four million, seven hundred and sixty thousand dollars in interest last fiscal year. Uh, that, that represents a cost basis rate of return of one point three two percent, uh, including liquid funds. During the fiscal year, Fosco 161 realized four hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars of interest, which is partly due to fund balance reserves. Um, the current, and the district currently represents about nine percent of the total pool. Um, if you go through, uh, I'm going to skip, skip the comps, but, but I have a section in the middle talking about the comps versus the various indices, um, and, um, talk about what's going on in the economy. If you just turn to page seven or if you just, uh, or just want to listen. Uh, the composition of the portfolio, um, at the end of June 32, 2017, sixty-three percent of the portfolio matured in one year or less maturities versus fifty percent of the previous year. Um, we, the, the pool had to be in liquid money because at the end of June, the perception was that the state was not going to fund school districts and general state aid was not going to come in. So we needed to make, we needed to make sure that if the state did that, that there was enough money liquid so that we could pay the teachers and pay the bills, um, and have liquid money to do so. Because again, the state was, said that they were not going to pass out any general state aid until they saw the school funding fund. Um, page nine is a composition of the investment portfolio by type. First of all, know that, uh, schools are limited in how they can invest the money by the Ohr public funds act, uh, which is very, uh, restricted. You can't invest in stocks and gold and real estate and things like that. It has to be very secure investments. Uh, for the year end of June 32, and we have over two hundred fifty investments in the pool. Um, uh, twenty-four percent, on June 32, 2017, twenty-four percent of the money was in liquid assets for the reasons that I mentioned. Uh, thirty-nine percent was in CDs. When I purchase CDs, uh, I buy them in three point five million dollar blocks and put them in the names of the different entities we service so that the total CD is under the FDIC law for security reasons. Uh, nine percent of the, uh, the portfolio was in government, government agencies. Twenty-one percent of the portfolio was in bank and corporate notes. And seven percent are municipal bonds. That was twenty-four percent of the previous year, but the value of municipal bonds, uh, went down as the year went on. So much of it went into that. Uh, the expectations are that the Federal Reserve will continue to increase short-term rates, perhaps two times this year, which may help increase our, our, our interest earnings. Uh, we're going to closely monitor what the Federal Reserve does, closely monitor what happens in Springfield. And the district should know that, uh, while we focus on maximizing interest earnings, our primary emphasis is always on safety and wellness. That's going to be your summary. You have any, you should have received the annual investment report if you have any questions. You have any, you should have received the annual rest report if you have any questions tonight or at any other time, I'd be happy to do that.
Any questions? How about?
Hey, we are going to move off of a Monday discussion, move to our summer academy updates.
Good evening, school board, Dr. Smith. Um, I'm back to talk about summer academy. I will briefly review, um, some of the logistics of it and engage in some of the data. And then, of course, answer any questions you have at that, ordering it. Um, it ran for six weeks, like I said before, um, for four days during the week in the mornings. It was not on Fridays. And we did our offer breakfast this year, and about sixty to eighty students, um, would participate in the breakfast program. It was from early childhood to eighth grade, we had an onsite program. Um, it was approximately three hundred and seventy-six students who took part in that. And this year was the first year we had an E.L. boost program. That was for, um, English learners in first and second grade who are identified from the school year for the program. Uh, we found a lot of success with that program. We also had the virtual program again with seventy-eight students, twenty-three being pre-algebra, and we switched up some things with that due to previous data. Um, in the past, we've used Odyssey, and a lot of the feedback was that they wanted to try something different from, for virtual. So I'll show you some data on that. We tried Khan Academy and Achieve three thousand this year instead of Odyssey. We had a language starts program that seventy-nine students participated in. That was, um, for Spanish and Mandarin, the parents brought the students for that, just for an hour twice a week. Um, we received a lot of positive feedback on that through email, and I've had, um, a lot of parents ask that I reach out to them if we continue to offer it during the school year, they're very interested in their children continuing to participate in that. And then we offered, um, occupational therapy and physical therapy and speech services to fifty-eight students as identified in their IEP if they needed it. So what data was collected? Um, we collected local pre- imposed assessments that aligned with the math curriculum that we did for the first year of summer academy and Lexile leveling. We collected writing samples, pre- and post, because we identified writing as an area of need. Um, I took teacher, teacher, parent, and student surveys, attendance and program numbers, lots of informal feedback through emails and talking to parents, uh, and students, and then observations of the program. Um, we did a survey at the end for virtual to see, because a lot of that work is done, um, at home with the parents, it's flexible. Um, so you can see the statistics there. A lot of the feedback when it came to virtual was either parents really liked the flexibility because they were traveling, going on vacations, their children were in other camps, um, or some parents said they would have preferred an onsite enrichment or STEAM program or something onsite, something that was rigorous that their students could actually attend. So I'll talk a little bit more to that and the suggestions.
Wait, I'm sorry, all right, is this just for virtuals?
Yeah.
Just for parents? How many students did you have in?
Um, seventy-six in virtual. And then, um, the virtual students took the survey for us, um, they were, they were pretty easy on the program. They were a hundred percent satisfied, they loved those virtual teachers, um, and the students said things like, um, that they liked the flexibility of it, they liked to do it from home, um, they liked to be able to talk back and forth with their teacher virtually.
Make sure you got writing, they said they would do it against the parents.
Right, I know, I know, I agree, and they're high scores. Um, then we did get survey data from the teachers who taught it. Um, overwhelmingly, they appreciated the full day of professional development, that was more than we'd ever given before, that was a suggestion from the board. They appreciated getting the materials ahead of time before they left school, that was another suggestion by the school board. Um, they appreciated materials just in general, they loved having the curriculum to go to, um, they had some specific comments. Those who, um, wanted to teach it again, it was seventy-five percent. Um, specifically cited the resources and appreciating that, and appreciating the support of our academy this year.
So some context to that, did you have virtual supplies, comparing something, or?
This was the first year that we had, yeah, they're comparing it to previous years they taught it. This was the first year that we actually brought in, um, like math workbooks and actual hard copies. Previously, they were kind of pulling, um, from the curriculum maps we previously had or online places like this. So this actually, um, was a summer intensive program for math that had different modules that they needed to complete, and so it was just more structured, uh, more alignment to what they need to get through for the students, so, yeah, that was kind of their context. So to pull out a snapshot of our math data, um, we used the, the math summer intensive series, and so it would have modules, and the teachers would administer a pre-assessment for onsite and a post-assessment. Um, and the pre-assessment could let them hone in on what skills they needed to do with the students. And then there was an online program, and it was one-to-one, so the students could work on the iPads and then they could pull students in small groups to really hone in on the skills that the students needed. And then if the pre-assessment reflected that the students already knew something, then they could continue on to other areas that the students needed. So this was the average point increase for each of the grade levels on the Unit Two assessment. The other modules, um, had similar percentage points. There was a lot of data to pull from this summer academy, so I tried to just pull different snapshots to show you and be transparent about the growth.
What did Unit Two mean?
Um, it was just one of the units, one of the they use for summer school, one of the modules. This one was specifically on, um, number cents, so depending on the grade, so for the younger ones, more with, um, adding, tracking, problem solving, and then the older grades more into number cents. Um, seventh grade had the highest percentage points, um, seventh grade also had the smallest class sizes. We had, um, huge attendance by seventh graders, some students are mandatory, and some students, uh, they decide to come or their parents decide to send them. So, uh, we had about sixty-seven grade students.
Will you remind us, how, how were they identified as being mandatory?
Um, it was through their math scores, um, was recommended, but then mandatory was if they were failing, um, for more than one quarter.
I thought it was strongly suggested that they had not been mandatory.
Yeah, um, so it's called mandatory, um, and the district didn't, for the guide laws, we make phone calls to the parents and we tell them that it's mandatory if their student was failing. Um, we do encourage them to be promoted to the next grade, though we did not have anyone stay behind.
But are the, um, lesson confusion, this is another discussion, I thought, of the students that we thought were at risk of mandatory, something like thirty, forty percent of my condition, or, or?
Oh, that's for recommended, for math tests. If, if they are below the thirty-fifth percentile, then they're recommended, we sent them a letter saying they're recommended, but there were twenty-three students at Parker who had been failing, and so they were mandatory, and a letter was sent and phone call came saying that they were.
But they all came, it's a hundred percent, that's the case, they did.
But of, right, but of the recommended math students, not all of them came. Um, then for virtual, summer academy for math, um, the, we have first through third, this is current first through third graders, current fourth through sixth, and then current seventh grade. So the eighty-two percent of students who made growth in the seventh to eighth grade, that's those pre-algebra virtual students that you're looking at there, and they made, um, approximately fifteen percentage point increase. Um, that assessment for them was directly aligned to the one they take for placement to get into algebra at Parker, but with different problems. Um, there was a direct correlation for virtual between the amount of time students spent on the program and the amount that they increased.
Do you, do you have a slide on that? You said that there was, you, you noted a correlation with the amount of time.
I, I know, I do have that data, though, so I, I can get that, um, that's part of it, that was submitted to end up amount of time they were on the programs. And so that was with Khan Academy. The ELA was with Achieve, and that was the program we used for ELA. I think the only change that was, like, difficult, difficult from Odyssey was Odyssey, math and ELA are all in one spot, and then for Khan and Achieve, it was in two different areas for those that wanted to, um, use it. Some of the seventh and eighth grade parents in pre-algebra also opted only to have their child focus on the pre-algebra and algebra skills and not take part in the Achieve.
So on the math side, you tell us that on average, uh, those kids that at least did thirteen or fifteen exchange points without.
Right.
That the, the ELA, maybe they spent six weeks there, made a hundred percent improvement, you might think that was very good.
Right, for ELA, it was a level set, um, on the Achieve program, and it was Lexiles, and they ranged anywhere from five to two hundred Lexile points. It all depended on their grade level and what they scored on the beginning. So that shows the percent of students who increased. Um, and then I did, uh, more of a mine some data from math, from the spring when they took the math assessment to the fall when they took the math assessment, and the percent of students who made growth. So these were the percents for ELA, for the students who were onsite.
What's the, typically, so most students lose, you know, move backwards in the math test from spring to fall, but not all of them.
Right.
So what, if we were to compare in our overall population of students, what percentage of our students generally improved from spring to fall on math?
So I started to look into the general population, um, and started, I got data of those two thousand students also. So I just did a couple of grade levels, um, I did seventh grade and compared it for our current seventh graders to the general population, fifty-two percent made growth, that's any growth at all. Then.
From spring to fall?
From spring to fall. But then I looked at second grade, because second grade continued to have a low trend, um, on these graphs for summer academy, and that's what keeps me up at night, why that was the case. For math for second grade, we had nine percent made growth.
But if they do respond to you, really, right?
It's any type, it's any amount.
Yeah, it's any amount.
Why not, and so if the average, did you big, big, the overall average student, like all the students of Lexile, right, from spring to fall, so if more than happened or gained in that challenge, that maybe would have dropped more, you know, in, um, the low student distribution.
Yeah, I mean, I can get you, um, more than danger with it, and I can break it out, um.
So these graphs were showing a percentage of students who made growth on math, but it sounds like if you look at comparing that, you know, did they outperform their peers here?
And this is any growth.
Or did you also?
This is any growth, because there's no report to pull that I could have done spring to fall, and especially I identified just our summer academy students. We can pull fall to winter, we can pull fall to spring, we can pull spring to spring. But pulling just summer academy students out of a report from spring to fall, there is no such report. But it's definitely something, um, to look at.
Can you go back to?
Yes.
Um, the nine percent at second grade?
Yes.
If it was nine percent for spring to fall on ELA, on math.
Oh, math, okay.
So again, our summer academy students slightly outperformed the non-summer academy students.
Slightly.
Do we hope, right?
Yeah, that, I mean, that's the goal. And.
What about, have you looked at the amount of growth they had? Because if, if we assume, at least those are summer academy students who are behind the session, our goal is to catch them on, right, so, you know, in order to reach that goal, we have to move them forward some number of points, right?
Right.
If there are seventh grader, they're, they're testing a fifth grade level, then move forward two points, and that may be better than their other, right, to watch the E.L. summer, we really haven't got comparable.
Is it enough? So second grade students who are onsite in math, their average growth point increase was four point eight points.
So we, we'll really need to look to see if they maintain this growth, I mean, because, kind of to Cameron's point, actually, for some kids, it would be great if they just didn't slide back so that they're not having to make up that first term or whatever it was, so it would be interesting if we could see what our kids do again.
Right, and to be fair, there are other factors. We don't know if parents hired a private tutor in addition, we don't know if they took them to the library programs, we don't know if they were in STEAM clubs. There are other factors other than summer academy. So looking at things that were successful to continue, um, the pre- imposed assessments, I think the pre-assessments should be considered, um, to continue so the teachers aren't wasting time on skills if the students already know them. Um, continuing a writing focus, writing continues to be an area of need for the district. Um, continuing the full day training, the PD, continuing to collect the data and the surveys on how the students feel, how the parents feel, progress reports, we pass those progress reports from summer academy on to their fall teachers so that they can get a jump start out knowing these students. Um, communication was early and often, uh, advertised a lot, we had the highest numbers, um, that we've ever had, and I think that was trying to push it out. The small class sizes, the celebrations, that was huge for the students. We worked a lot on incorporating distorted practices. Um, I'm proud of the students for their behavior, and the teachers were an excellent team that contributed to that. Um, behavior was great, so they were able to accomplish a lot. A lot of the feedback from parents and from students was to reduce the student assessments. They said, um, their students are assessed a ton throughout the year, and then they were hoping that there would be less assessments with summer academy, but without the assessments, I can't review the data, so I'll go with the program. Um, they definitely want some sort of onsite STEAM program, they want some sort of onsite enrichment program. They said, um, they would be happy to pay more. We currently charge one hundred dollars for the entire six-week summer academy session, um, and fifty dollars for transportation if they're on the fee waiver, unless they pay nine. So, um, it would be an investment on the district's part. We already had, um, almost five group students in and out during summer academy. If we offered an onsite enrichment and STEAM program, I think those numbers would be extraordinary. I mean, we're very interested, so. And then just looking at the structure and the length of summer academy, we look at the growth, it's six weeks, four days a week, just in the mornings. It comes out to about thirty hours of ELA instruction and thirty hours of math. Kind of sounds like a lot, but if you could live in, in the normal school year, we reached that in about four weeks. Any other question?
Just, I just want to clarify something, so the one hundred dollars charged, I see fewer students that are mandatory, is that correct?
Yes, if they're not on the fee waiver, that's not.
Thank you very much. I mean, I think part of the reason why, um, we wanted to have you come in and talk about this is because, um, for many of us, we have no basis in which to compare success of the summer program, so we need to start from somewhere. So, you know, just as, for example, your survey question, the teachers about, you know, they were excited and appreciated having. So, you know, just as, for example, your survey question, the teachers about, you know, they were excited and appreciated having materials. You know, so now we have a basis in which to start to tweaking next year and figuring out what works or doesn't. We don't have to talk about it today, but I would love to hear as the year goes on and you start planning for this, you know, how will you, how will you structure, or if you will structure the math virtual program differently now that we have a new math curriculum? And now that we'll be looking at ELA, how does this all feed into it? Because what we want in the phase is have measurable goals. We want all of our students to be benefiting from this. So to whatever extent possible, I think I mentioned this earlier in the spring, you know, we'd love to see, you know, you just mentioned this, whether or not students are maintaining those levels. So, you know, and I'm particularly, I'm particularly interested, as you know, in those kids who took the pre-algebra course. Because what we really, we really want to do is reduce the number of students who go over to HF and have to retake classes when they have taken Harper. So we, so to the extent that you can track those students over the, you know, next year and then, you know, we'd love to hear that information. See how this.
I'd love to hear any valid boxes that you guys have from receiving participation in the program. Parents can, you know, parents have worked on stuff lots of times, they should not be able to get their kids there. But if we've identified, so there would be help, we're offering resources for novel. We should get them.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, if you get it from behind, I don't know how else, why else are you going to do that other than yourself?
I think a lot of it, I think if you may, if you want to address slides, maybe is. My experience is parents want something that lasts for longer than a couple of hours for each day. Because now they have to figure out, you know, other options for their children, one of the other part of it.
Right.
So that, I think that's part of it.
Yeah, and those types of things would happen. They would say, I don't really have someone who can, a way to have my child go from there to another afternoon program I need consistently. You know, there were a lot of different reasons.
But I agree, I mean, I love the celebrations piece, and I think we should, we're, I'd love to hear thoughts later on about how to increase participation. You know, I can tell you that my four-year-old did carry the little philosopher cat backpack.
The kid's more, maybe the junior high kids, they thought it was cool. I wasn't sure if they were going to, so I was like, yes. So.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Homewood Home Rule.
Sure, so this is an opportunity to discuss the potential of Village of Homewood moving to home rule. You know, they are looking to seek a public referendum to allow the designation of Homewood as a home rule community. They have discussed this publicly on October tenth, an open session. I did attach that presentation to this memo for your review. Essentially, twenty percent of our students currently live in Homewood, it's about forty to fifty-four of them. So I think that this time, we need the board to discuss the ability to support this referendum. And then in addition, to provide direction or at least information to take back to the village to negotiate the next part of this, which is the movement to Homewood, to add a quarter of a percent sales tax. I do have some updated numbers based on conversations with the village manager. So that would in theory bring about one point two million dollars. And I believe their initial recommendation would be for the first three quarters of those funds to go to Homewood, one fifty-three schools. The remaining funds to be divided between the remaining taxing bodies, so the park district, library, District two, three, three, us. The question would be whether or not District one fifty-three is in that second distribution. Any questions? Initial thoughts?
I think initially what we spoke about, that I was saying, therefore, you know, I'm just one person, so I'm not the entire board. But if this was something that did not fund here, would we still be entitled to receive those funds or no? So I, I think that certainly there needs to be some verification on that part of it. And.
I didn't understand your first part. I think you took it, you did not follow.
We don't support it.
We don't support it. If this board doesn't support, I'm not saying we will, we will, no. But if we don't support it, will we still benefit? We have to support this in order for this school district to benefit from this. So I think I would like verification on that particular question.
To put it in context, the Village of Flossmore is looking at a one percent sales tax increase without any of those funds.
Say it again.
So Village of Flossmore is looking to also go home rule.
Yeah.
They would add a one percent additional sales tax. But none of those funds will come to the school district, they will all go to the village.
Just to clarify, Village of Flossmore not going to home rule, or is it not? It doesn't matter.
Zero.
They're getting a referendum on the sales tax.
Yes.
So if you're at home rule, what, yeah, Homewood must go home rule because the village board is going to change sales tax on the jump. And if you want to remind them, those Flossmore is going to do that, they're going to do just a referendum on the sales tax. If they want to change sales tax in the future, they have to. But what is Homewood's, I mean, this is a negotiation, I don't know, it's just giving us money. Part of it, if it doesn't sell standards or any statute or agreement, it's a place you have to share, doesn't matter.
We don't have to share anything. I think it is, the greatest of their hearts, they understand that one fifty-three is struggling mainly because how they've structured the businesses on housing friendly. So as they're looking to do something for that school district, they have to, one of our students comes to Homewood as well.
I think this is not the first time that this has come up in Homewood. I mean, so I think, I think their approach might be a little bit different this time around, which is they're trying to have conversation with the different taxing bodies to try and get their support so that it can gain greater support from folks on election.
Is there any question?
So, I mean, that's, you know, and one fifty-three is in a different position financially than one sixty-four.
Also, do you think we'll have an answer to that question to a part about that?
That's about the next meeting. Are there any other pieces?
Yeah.
So it's the same, no, right?
So are they asking us to take a vote on support of this or?
It's up to one guess. And you would have to approve a revenue share arrangement.
And so they'd be like one next.
We can share on that part. Yeah, they may have a revenue share, you're very good.
We would have to codify our expectations.
Do we need it for him to do that?
Actually.
Well, because it's the, just the district versus Village of Flossmore has, I think. So we don't have to get approval from Village of Flossmore.
No, no, I just, I just don't.
I would like to hear thoughts or comments that both John and Steve may have on this issue. Do you think that they know any feedback and early conversations around this?
Well, I think we bring it back on thirteen.
Yeah, I think so.
What we could do is make the second meeting, and probably the second meeting on my first question, take action, give three seconds, move forward.
You know, I do want to say, and I know people are tired of hearing me say this, but you know, we're talking about another tax and it benefits, you know, the schools, we benefit from it. And again, you know, I don't live in Homewood, but I am a part of the school district, you know. And again, careful thought, certainly to go into this because again, we're talking about homeowners. And, you know, whether or not we support it, I don't know, they're still fine.
Well, you're not necessarily just talking about homeowners, you're talking about anyone who goes shopping on housing.
Everybody is going to be affected that shops in the area that realises it's huge.
If you think of other questions, send them to me, and I will reach out and gather this information for you.
Oh, I know what it was. So the turnaround time, the timeframe is very short for Homewood, right?
Well, they'll have to, the best resolution in December, they add it to the ballot.
So, I mean, so I know that people are, you know, I've heard some of them going around and making news, that people are definitely talking about it. We'll bring it back.
Yes.
Next item on the agenda, November four topics.
Any questions or additions?
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, LeBron. Next item, monthly financial report.
Any questions? We recommended pulling the next report for the next meeting, the board members sitting for three years to be here. They had a question, you should give back to the side, you could just enter my presentation. Our agreement is included. Take a look. Questions? You know, me, call me whenever you need to, we can bring that up with information. Looking for a different piece of information again for next meeting.
Next, I have a discussion about the assembly resolutions.
Hopefully everyone brought their. So again, this is in preparation for the tri conference that is in November. There's a number of resolutions and language that are, I delegate and roll and add up to a vote. Officially, they're created though. Student safety and protection, school is a polling place for your person, one percent sales tax statewide. No meetings, act change, discuss shared services amongst district, change in reporting part testing results. Opposition statement on PTL, statement on charter school funding, and then energy savings contract. Not sure about the best way to go through these. You can start with, does anybody have any particular moments of student safety and protection? Generally, it allows to build a safety plan where you can have concealed firearms in your school buildings. Right now, that is not allowed.
Which age is that one?
Nine.
So we need to, if, we need to agree on how we want to support or not these resolutions. We need to agree as a board today.
No, no, not today. But at the next meeting, remember, we should be able to provide. Or remember, how to be with some direction, because she will be, you know, delegate, she will carry your votes for them. So we got it. Why don't we just review them and then we can come back and then kind of roll them all, which one is okay?
Yeah.
So then, second one, yeah, this is the school support reimbursement as school districts and other tokens that we use for lectures and polling. There's a cost associated with that in the past, those costs were passed on to the school this year. And they were having to, this would allow for, you know, a school district to say, it costs X number of dollars to provide the security during the polling. Because we have students in the building and then they will see the reimbursement.
As applied to this district, does that cost significantly at all?
I'm sorry.
As applied to this district, does that cost significantly at all? Do we care?
I would say find that information. All right, now the next one again is a one percent, one percent sales tax statewide. And those funds would go towards funding public education. Now fourth again is open meetings to discuss shared staff. Essentially, as the law currently exists, if you have a shared staff number between entities, the boards cannot discuss performance in closed session. So this would allow capital spending with a discussion in closed session, which are simply talking about a shared staff.
Can you give me an example?
Say we shared an operations and maintenance or a tech, say we shared a specialized tech person as a team.
Oh, okay.
We'll limit it on how you can talk about that person's performance. Now the next one is the part testing results. Essentially, this looks at reporting the discrepancy between paper pencil and electronic testing results. And if there are any differences in the type of assessment of students and the scores that we're seeing from there. The PTL no penalty for the underleaving, you shouldn't be interested in, essentially this allows you to underleave and have access to those funds for a period of three years. Number seven is balancing public education. Again, this has to do with how charter schools are funded in Illinois. Also with respect to virtual charter schools, I mentioned, we take a look at that. It shows the district that has submitted that position. Then finally, there are eight energy savings contracting. Gives the board the opportunity to convert the bid, practice and upgrades, energy savings technology, et cetera. So we're going to be back on thirteen. Do you want any of this information pulled out into the memo or can we leave it in this format?
I believe we can.
You know, we'll, we'll just pull out and list them specifically, over the pages. That way we can find them. And then our notes will capture the board's position each of them, and then we just break down.
Okay.
So you're talking about voting on the current position?
I believe it's just the. But I will, I will verify that. Yeah, I believe it's the only thing.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? Next.
Next item on the agenda, executive session, matters related to personnel fight I L dash C S one twenty dash two. Any motion please to move to executive session?
So.
The second?
Second.
Okay. Briggs?
Yes.
Hapley?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. And here are no actual items, I think we would be in ten, fifteen minutes, although I know I've seen that. But seriously, time, about ten, fifteen minutes.